...of the Royal Oak Planning Commission to order. First, let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor pro tem.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twain, Community Development Director.
Jeff Chase.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Next item is the approval of the minutes for November 14th. Is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Support?
Support.
Move by Douglas, support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on the minutes from November 14th? Not seeing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, next item is item C. This is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak publicly on an item that's not on our agenda? Okay, not seeing any hands, I'll close. Item C, public comment on non-agenda items, and moving on to old business. This is a zoning ordinance text amendments for preservation and replacement of existing trees. Mr. Twain.
As we indicated in the staff memo, we've been rather busy the last month, so we haven't had an opportunity to make the revisions that we discussed with the planning commission at a prior meeting. So I would ask that you consider a resolution to postpone it to the January meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to postpone to January?
Motion.
Motion, my mayor, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this item's been moved to the January meeting, thank you. Next up under old business is site plan SP 171025 to demolish an existing restaurant and construct a five-unit, 6,500 square foot commercial building for retail sales. Mr. Twain, I've read the staff, your staff recommendation, is there, you want to tell us about this?
Well, this is an item that was postponed by the planning commission directing the petitioner to modify the building and the site plan and the placement of the building. As we've indicated, planning department staffs had several inquiries and multiple contacts with the petitioner, but we have not received any revised plans as of today. What I would indicate is the staff told me this afternoon, they did get a call from the petitioner that indicated they would have revised plans by the end of this week. I guess that's always a possibility, but it's been postponed a couple of times and it's really up to your discretion whether you want to postpone it for another month.
Okay, um, is there any discussion on this, or is there a motion? The recommendation, I'm not sure if it's a recommendation, but our staff has put together a memo stating that many, many times he's contacted the petitioner with no results and asked him to attend the meeting tonight. The recommendation may be just to deny this original site plan, but what's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll make a motion to deny the site plan.
Okay, there's a motion to deny, is there support on that?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster, any discussion on this?
I mean, if they haven't come back this many times, it's, seems like they don't want to do it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to deny, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, the petition's been denied. Okay, next item is, this is new business now. This is our only public hearing for this evening. It's an amendment to special land use and special redevelopment site plan SP 130716 to install balconies on three multiple-family buildings at 11 Mile and Maxwell Park. Mr. Twain.
The planning commission members may recall that you did approve this special land use permit and site plan as part of a special redevelopment area, one of the former school sites, Longfellow Elementary. You did approve those three buildings for 12 dwelling units as part of that special redevelopment, and you also granted some relief from some specific setback requirements under the ordinance as part of that. The petitioner is proposing to add balconies to the sides of each of those three previously approved units or buildings that contain four units apiece. Those balconies would encroach into the setbacks that you previously granted relief from. You would have to take a similar action if you so choose this evening to approve the addition of the balconies on each side of the three different buildings for those waivers. As we indicated in the report, it basically is, the east side front yard setback would end up being six feet from Maxwell Avenue right away, that previously was 10. The minimum west side setback from the property line that separates the Y from this property would end up being roughly 3.7 feet. I believe previously it was seven, almost eight feet. Then the minimum distance between the buildings would be seven feet, and previously it was 15. So those are the changes that are depicted, you'll see on the site plan, each one of those balconies. You should also be able to see from the floor plans that those balconies are off the kitchens, as well as you can see the elevation that were provided. So you're looking at basically balconies being added, one on the second floor and one on the third floor of each of those units on each side.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twain? Okay, not seeing is the petitioner here? Okay, no petitioner. Back to the planning commission. Any discussion, or what's the pleasure of the commission?
These setbacks are being decreased, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
The setbacks are being decreased via the balcony.
Yeah, the balconies stick out four feet, so they're...
And that's all the way up, encroaching.
Right.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I did, I was curious about, I mean, typically when you've got a balcony on an apartment, it's, you know, there's a sliding door and light flooding in, and that increases your access to the outdoors, and these are sort of balconies with what appears to be a solid pedestrian door leading off them. Just, I was curious about the purpose of them. Honestly, I don't have any real objection to the addition of the balconies despite the encroachment into the setback, but I wish they were here to tell us more about that. I guess that said, I'll make a motion to approve the, what are we, approving the change to the site plan or special land use?
Would be both. You'll see the three or four contingencies we have listed on page three.
So are we doing this in two moves then? One to approve the special land use and then the site plan?
No, the special land use was previously granted. What you're doing is modifying the site plan that went along with that.
All right.
Do it as one motion.
All right, so I will move to modify the special land use and the site plan as proposed.
There's a motion to approve this modification, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Mr. Chase, any discussion on this motion? Ms. Douglas?
No, I, I mean, it doesn't seem like an enormous change. I understand the appeal of any little bit of outdoor space on a multifamily unit. When they proposed this to us, what, four years ago, I mean, what had preceded it was a proposal for a strip mall there, and when they came into us with, you know, residential, very consistent with the single-family behind it, we were very pleased to have that proposed, and I'm still pleased.
Any other discussion? Okay, not seeing, all those in favor of the motion to approve the modification to the special land use and site plan? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, actually, I should have opened the public hearing. Oops. So, Mr. Twain, what's the protocol? Okay, now, let's see, let's have a reconsideration of the motion to reopen, motion to reconsider?
Support.
Support, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Now, now I can open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Cannot see, we'll close the public hearing, I apologize to the commission. Is there, the motion to approve's still on the table? Motion to approve's still on the table, support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Get out of that one.
ISIS averda.
Okay, next up is the site plan SP 171229 to construct a seven-level municipal parking structure with 581 spaces on the site of municipal parking lot located 110 East 11 Mile. Mr. Twain.
Very briefly, this proposed parking lot, municipal parking lot by the city, or parking deck is to be located in an existing municipal surface lot. As you indicated in the, right up at the deck itself, would have some 581 spaces. There's also seven spaces proposed off of the public alley to the west. Would have access ingress egress to 11 Mile along the east side of the proposed structure, as well as access ingress egress to Second Street on the south side of the proposed structure. The design of the deck is very similar to the one that's currently being wrapped up, but Second Avenue and, or Second Street and Center on the south side of the post office in terms of the exterior. I know Mr. Canal is here from Rich and Associates to give you kind of an overview of the deck.
Any questions to Mr. Twain before the petitioner? Okay, sir, your name?
Richard Canal with the firm of Rich and Associates. So as Mr. Twain indicated, the, the, the design of the proposed new parking structure is very similar, in fact, it's identical in footprint to the exist, the new structure that's about to open at Second and Center Street. Traffic flow is very similar in terms of the circulation through the, the structure. If you can go to the, the next sheet, the ground floor will not have, the one difference is the ground floor will not have any commercial space at this location as it does on the Second Center Street Garage. So we will, won't have any express ramping going up, so it'll, it's somewhat more efficient in terms of the square footage per car space, and it's, hopefully it's cost per car space. The ground floor will have a couple of ancillary rooms, but primarily entry-exit, as Mr. Twain indicated, will occur at the southwest corner off of Second Street and at the southeast corner, yeah, and access drive on the east side coming off of 11 Mile Road. Pretty standard vehicular circulation, two-way traffic through the, through the structure up to the roof. It is a grade and six supported, so seven total levels and 581 cars.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas?
On the west facade at ground level, is there any exterior lighting?
We haven't gotten developed at that, that far, but the, the intent is to develop some, some lighting, accent lighting on that. There are existing poles, electrical poles there, we have to study the, the light levels that are currently there, what will be left over from existing fixtures, and then supplement that with what we'll need on that side of the, the structure.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster.
Can you elaborate why there, there wasn't any consideration for commercial at the ground floor in this particular location?
The direction that we got from, from the, the planning department was that was not, not a requirement or not a desire on this site. Certainly, it, again, that commercial space decreases your efficiency and drives your costs up slightly because you're not parking on it, obviously, and, and your cost per car space tends to go up.
Okay. Mr. Chase?
Just from facade coloring, are we determined on what textures, colors, fake brick, are we going with brick panels, anything? I see it on here, I just, it's a little small.
Right now, the intention is to have the same or very similar coloration and finishes to the Second Street. We have to work with the planning department, obviously, on any options because the direction has been, you know, basically a carbon copy to the Second Center Street Garage. I think there's opportunity here to maybe slightly change that to complement the colors that are adjacent to this site, but we wouldn't deviate very far at all, maybe one tone slightly in brick color or something, just to give it, so they're not exact carbon copies. But again, that, that has to be discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Twain, does this, this does not go to the commission after this? If this is approved, it's, it just...
As far as the site plan, it doesn't go to the commission? The commission's role will be to award any contract to build, so they will have input on the structure, but it'll be in a different format rather than site plan approval.
I have a question, maybe for the mayor or Ms. Douglas even. In terms of operationism, will this be operated by the DDA or the municipality, or who, how does that work with?
Well, I can answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's going to continue to be operated by the municipality, probably through the same contractor that runs the other decks or manages the other deck, which is currently park right.
Okay.
But it would be a city-owned facility.
Okay.
We collect the fees.
Okay.
We collect the revenues, we do hire a professional firm, bid it out.
To manage it.
To manage it, you know, to make sure the maintenance is being done, to have people staffed to collect the fees and deal with mechanical issues and things of that nature.
Have there been any decisions made about operation in terms of, I know that when Rochester built theirs, like, the first two hours is free, and then after that you pay. Is there any discussions at the commission level on that level yet, or we're not there yet?
Yeah, I think, I think that's going to be more of a comprehensive discussion for the downtown that we're going to have, you know, with the DDA and other community members, not just in the context of the new parking facilities we're seeing in the downtown, but also in the context of new technology that we're seeing in the marketplace that can, you know, everyone clamors for Park Mobile, and everyone clamors for, you know, seamless parking and things of this nature. So I think, I think the topics overlap.
Okay.
But I don't think anything we do here isn't going to, at least what I see, prohibit any future action to do two hours free, or, you know, put a cool technology in, use another service provider, things like that.
Okay.
I think the design is flexible to all of those things. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not the expert.
Absolutely correct. The current technology that we're installing in the Second Center Street structure will have some of those flexibilities, the, the equipment, the updated equipment that providers are offering today offer a wide range of opportunities on how you want to operate your, your facilities.
Okay, thank you. I just, I know we're a little off-topic of the site plan, but I think it's important to have that discussion if this isn't going to be in front of the commission at some level, I think the public, it's nice for the public to understand if we're owning this, how we're going to operate it, so...
Well, it's a fair question, because the site plan impacts our ability to be agile in the future. It's an important question, I think, so good question.
Okay. All right, and any other discussion or questions for the petitioner, Mr. Twain on this? Okay, not seeing, this is not a public hearing, so we can entertain a motion?
Basically, you've got, in the staff report, there are eight suggested contingencies or acknowledgements from the planning commission in terms of compliance. One is in regard to provisions about the ground floor use and retail or non. Second is any building that's over 40 feet in height, the planning commission does have discretion of terms of whether there would be any setback required for the portions above that. Obviously, that would significantly impact the configuration and layout of a parking deck. Item three is in regards to corner vision clearance setbacks at driveways and intersections. I would point out that the one at 11 Mile on the east side of the property, the exit lanes are, are lane away from the building, so I don't really envision that there's any site clearance issues at 11 Mile. The inbound lane is on the west side of that driveway, so the exit lanes are far enough away. The exit at the southwest corner on the Second Street would be the one that you would be looking at in terms of deeming that it's adequate, in terms of that site corner clearance. Trees being removed and replaced, you should be able to see the landscape plan that's proposed. Several of the trees that are on the west side of the library have already been removed because of disease. Based on the placement of the sidewalk, there will be a few more that are removed as part of that, as well as all of the trees that are currently in the surface parking lot median areas. The rest of the contingencies are really standard contingencies about construction of the, of the site.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion? Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to move approval of the site plan, but I want to add a contingency, number nine or something, that specifies that they, the building will have lighting, pedestrian lighting along the west facade. We've talked about the adjacent office building and wanting to turn that into more of a place, and in fact, the developer changed some of the, the design of that, their west facade, to make it a little more attractive, a little friendlier, and I definitely want to encourage, you know, make people feel safe when they're walking through this alley.
Okay, is there a support on that with the contingency number nine?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase, any discussion on this motion? Mayor?
Yeah. I'm just trying to think of this logically, since we are the petitioner. I think there'd be, I mean, I agree with the concept that we need to have lighting in the alley. Is there something that, and maybe I'll ask Mr. Twain this, is there something in the site plan that, does that need to be included in the site plan, or is that something that, you know, the city commission could move forward with in a change order, or in the, you know, design phase? Is it, is that lighting critical to the, to what we have in front of us today? If we were to decide later to put lighting in there, is that something that would have to be approved by the planning commission?
Well, the answer, I guess, in two fashions. I think it's totally appropriate to add it here.
Okay.
As part of the planning commission. Having said that, if you didn't add it here and the city commission wanted to do it as part of the construction, you could do it there then too, but I think it's fine to add it here. It gives clear direction on that you do want some lighting. The design will then proceed with providing that. Again, it'll be designed pursuant to ordinance requirements in terms of shielding and directed downward, and those types of things, but...
So as long as that lighting doesn't violate any of our existing ordinances or need any variances associated, if it complies with everything, adding it here gives clarity.
That you want it. Item six somewhat identifies the idea that we're anticipating light fixtures on, on the site. There'd probably be some on the roof that aren't being depicted currently, that might have to be designed and approved, so... But I think it's fine to add it here.
Okay, and the estimation, I don't see it as being a material cost impact that, you know, we have two members of the commission of, which is not a majority of the commission, making a cost adjustment that's significant, so I feel that in the broad context of the project, this expense would not, I don't want to say it'd be a rounding error, but it would not, you know, create a significant hazard as far as that's concerned, so, and it is the privilege of this planning commission to do that, so, thank you for clarifying it, I'll support it.
Any other discussion? Okay, not seeing, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, item three. Site plan 171230, this is a site plan to construct a two-story municipal office building in the Royal Oak City Hall on the site of municipal parking lot at 211 South Troy Street. Mr. Twain.
I'm going to let Jason Krieger and the petitioner walk through their presentation first, and then I can come back and touch on the...
Sounds good.
Let me get down to their presentation first.
You make me work for it.
I am.
All right, good evening, my name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Cloud Architects, I have Jeff Clatt with me in the audience, my business partner, and we're here tonight to present Royal Oak City Hall. Thanks for having us here this evening. We prepared a brief PowerPoint slideshow that's a little bit more graphically friendly than just looking at drawings that were submitted as required. So what we want to do first is just touch on what we've done to date, just so that, I mean, obviously, we've been working with the planning commission, want to make sure that, or, I'm sorry, the city commission, we want to make sure that the planning commissioners are up to date on what's happened so far, so that they realize that we're not operating in a vacuum, but rather we're working with the city and plant Moran all the way through. So on the next slide, what you'll see is, we've had, for a while, we've had numerous meetings with city department heads, there has been a survey monkey with the city staff that we've reacted, reacted to. We've worked with the planning department and engineering department when designing the site. We've also had two public work sessions where there was comments, feedback, and all of these things culminated into the plan that we have this evening. The next slide is some brief project data. Basically, we have about 124 parking spaces on the site. 90 spaces are standard parking spaces, six are barrier-free, and we have 28 city staff parking spaces that are dedicated just for city vehicles. The square footage is 36,000 square feet, and the height, total height to the top of the tower is about 48. The second floor parapet's 35 foot eight. The next slide is a context map that shows you where the proposed location's going to be. We did meet with the city commission, and we looked at numerous options. This was the site that was chosen. It's across from the Future Park, it's south of the Farmer's Market, and it's right on the corner of Troy and Third Street. The next slide shows what will be the ultimate layout of the master plan. So you can see that the building has shifted a bit to the north on that site, where we have parking to the east of it, and then parking to the south, the south is where the city vehicles would go, so you can see that it'd be a bit more secured. The proposed parking deck is to the west of the library, and then the Central Park, which is still yet to be designed, is right across from City Hall. So the site that we have for the future City Hall was chosen because it creates a boundary around this park. It allows us to front it along the street and create a pedestrian environment. I felt that was just the best location for this building. The parking to the east, I sort of mentioned, is still something that would be used by Farmer's Market on the weekends, so all of these things have been considered and thought The next slide is a little more technical-looking, that's our site plan from our civil engineers. One thing that I want to point out is that the slight, or the site has a grade difference of almost four feet as you go from the west to the east. So what you'll notice on some of these pictures coming up is that we have some ramps and steps along the east side of the building. I actually think that adds some drama and visual interest to the facade. Along the west, it's all at grade and level, okay? So we, that's why, as part... So we, that's why, as partly why we position the ADA spaces along the northeast side of the building, is because it's closest to the ramp. They're also in a great position to serve the Farmer's Market if need be. The parking lot to the south, that has the city vehicles, that also has what would be the primary entrance for city staff. And then to the north, there's another entrance for city staff members that have their offices up in that area. The dumpsters are along to the southeast corner. There's already a dumpster there that serves the court. We would add another one for City Hall. And then we looked at loading and unloading. We had traffic studies done by our engineers that show box trucks, a little bit larger trucks, things that would have deliveries going to City Hall, and they meet the turning radiuses that would be required. The next slide shows a landscape plan provided by our engineers. Basically, we're completing the streetscape around, from the west around to the north, and then a little bit to the south of that, and then we have parking, and then we have some trees in the parking lot as well. Next slide's architectural site plan. I've already touched on some of the items that are bulleted there. One thing that I think's important to mention, too, that you'll see is this is really a two-sided building. We have the park on the west, as you know, and we have parking on the east. So what you'll see is that we have a central spine that goes through this building. We want to make sure that we're looking at the parking lot as well as the park, so that will explain why the facade is the way it is when you see it. The next slide shows the first floor. So now, as you're looking at this, the park is on the top of the image. The parking is on the bottom of the image. So we have a central spine that goes through the building. That's where the main counters are for the most regularly visited departments. You're gonna have community development, assessor, clerk, treasurer. That's where the counters are, and that's where the public would mostly be. We designed this building so that the ground floor could be locked down during commission meetings. So if you were to park in the east and come in, the main lobby there, which is on the bottom side of that image, the pink area, that's the commission chambers. That area can be locked down so people don't wander through City Hall during commission meetings. Right now, you know, you kind of go through the whole building, and that's a security risk. Go to the next slide. Second floor shows the rest of the offices. There would be a key file for some sort of security control mechanism to control people from getting upstairs, but if you're an employee, you'd have access throughout the whole building. Again, we have our central corridor to get the stairs on the east and west, and then we have the offices on the north and south. The program, the ground floor is larger because of the program needs, and then it tapers in as you go to the second floor. This is the lower level. The lower level allows us to put our mechanical items down here and additional storage. Even though the technology's coming into play, there's less paper, there was still some needed, some storage for City Hall. And it was also a great spot, like I said, for us to put our mechanical and electrical services as they come into the building. We did not do a full basement because it's very expensive, so we designed what we would need. There is probably a little bit of room for growth in there. We positioned it where it was because there was a high water table, so as we moved to the southeast, the water table actually went lower because our building was a little bit higher. So it helps us save money, and it creates less risk down the road for water intrusion. The next four slides are exterior elevations of the building. So we're really, we were inspired by the traditional buildings that surround this site. We wanted a timeless design, so we have brick, cast, stone, metal panels, and glass are the primary building elements. We wanted to make sure that we borrowed some elements from the courthouse, the post office, we think is really nice, and other buildings in town. So the goal here is for this to feel like it belongs in downtown Royal Oak. Go to the next couple of slides, Tim. That would be, I guess, the east, or I'm sorry, probably the north elevation. That's the next one. It's south, north, yep. That faces the park. That faces the south. Next slide, and the next couple of slides, we have some renderings of what the building would look like. You can see there that that's the steps that would be on the east side of the building And then we have two slides that show, it's a work in progress, but it gives you an idea of what the interiors are working towards. So again, we want to make sure that the building looks continuous from the inside and the outside, so something that's a bit more traditional, but has some, you know, obviously, the modern amenities and some modern flair to it. And finally, there's a photometric plan, so. The photometric plan really just showed the lights. We have some sconces around the building. It has a full cutoff as you go around, but that does not have is the parking lot lighting that is yet to be designed, but that would be designed accordingly and within the ordinance standards.
Thank you.
We have, is that for any other? Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Nice presentation. Mr. Twing, did you want to?
Well, very briefly, I can run through the staff report. Far as moving forward, if the Planning Commission saw fit to approve it. Item one is in regards to the orientation of the building, the heights, width ratio requirements under the ordinance that your review believes the proposed building meets those. Item two is in regards to the landscape plan, the number of trees being removed and replaced in the, on the site. As we indicate, there's twenty-six new trees replacing seventeen that are being removed. Item three, given the current configuration of the lot or properties, we are gonna need to combine parcels as well as vacate some portions of Second Street and Hamilton Court in order to build across them. So that's item three of the contingencies. Item four really related to the waste receptacle enclosure and trying to determine whether that's the best location for it or not based on what it's serving and access. So we've left it in there that that would be determined as we move through the site connectivity plans, which are a separate set of site plans that deal with things outside the building envelopes. There was some concern that this enclosure area would have some visibility impacts of people leaving and coming in from that south exit, so we want an opportunity to continue to look at it. Items five, six, seven, eight, nine are standard contingencies for all site plans.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any questions for Mr. Twing or the petitioner at this point? Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where the seventeen trees are. There are evergreens along Troy Street. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Most of the trees there along Troy.
Uh, there's probably a f, yes. Let me see if I can find the original survey. They're in Troy, it looks like. Oh, some will be in Troy. There are probably a few on Third Street where there is a, part of the proposal is to have parallel parking. We're losing a couple. There are several being removed along Troy Street where the building is pushed out towards Troy. I think that's the majority of them.
So there's, I mean, because I'm just looking at Google Street View here along, what is that, Third Street? There seems to be a tall tree there. Do we know what species that is?
Uh, well, the one that's staying, the largest one on the site plan, if you look there, there's a bump out that, and right away, that tree will stay.
Oh, good.
There's one on each side of it that are being removed.
Right. Okay, that's good. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kloster?
Can we, can either the petitioner or Mr. Twing, can you speak to the desire for surface parking? And just earlier this meeting, we discussed the five hundred and eighty-one spaces going in just down the street. It seems like there's a large quantity of surface parking as part of this project. Can we discuss that desire at all?
Well, I guess I'll answer as best I can. You know, there's always been a need for parking around this area, surface parking, especially to service the Farmer's Market. You're right, there's a considerable amount of parking going in that garage. On the weekends, the Farmer's Market gets rather busy, so we tried to maximize as much as we could to support that. That's really where that came from.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think also, too, if I may interject, I mean, for service vehicles for the city, you know, you have building and code and everybody having quick access to their vehicle to and from the, their offices to go out and do the work they have to do within the community. I think there's also a need to have some surface-level parking there as well.
Correct.
As opposed to having to walk to the garage and, you know, eat up valuable time.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, a landscaping question. To the south, where the Royal Oak fleet is going to be parked?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not seeing any trees or landscaping along that street, and I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to do that?
Let me scroll down a little bit.
If you're referring to along Third Street, in this area, you have an existing situation with the parking lot and a wall, sidewalk in place, and what's being added there is some parallel spots on the north side. I don't believe there was, the thought being that there wasn't enough space to add additional greenery in that area.
Okay.
Now, along Troy Street, I believe there is some...
There is greenery along Troy Street.
Okay. I'm just thinking, because I know that when we had Beaumont through here, we, one of the things that we, actually, Ms. Douglas brought it up, that we like to see along Coolidge is that they buffered the parking from the street with some additional landscaping.
Sure.
And if there's an opportunity to do that here, I think we'd certainly like to see greenery rather than a fleet, a fleet of vehicles. So if you could just make a note of, that's something that, you know, might be desirable. It's just my opinion. My second, and I know this is a municipal design, but I'm wondering if you've looked at anything for the green infrastructure for stormwater as well as lead standards?
Glad you asked. Yes, we have.
Okay.
So...
Can you speak on that, or?
You know, I can in my limited knowledge of it, but there will be permeable pavers in this parking lot. I just met with Matt Callahan today. And if I can point, but basically, as the parking lot sheets from west to east.
Okay.
Okay? There will be permeable pavers in the center aisle, a strip of them there, and then also a strip along the far east side.
Okay.
And then also, I believe there were some along the far south as well. So I don't know the quantity that it, you know, would take up stormwater-wise, but they are absolutely planning, planning on that right now.
Okay. I just have the opinion that if this is our building, we should lead by, you know, design, and we've been talking about it for a long time. I'm not sure what the soil type is here, you know, if it's, if it's sandy or crummy or...
Sand.
It's like perfect for...
It's all sand.
Is it sand? Well, there you go.
Yeah, so...
So that's a great opportunity then to address, you know, stormwater on our own, on our own site.
We're, to my knowledge, based on what I heard today, we are designing that in there.
Okay.
And there's also geothermal that's going in the eastern. So far, it's planned. Geothermal would be in the east parking lot as well.
Okay. Those were my comments. Any other comments or questions or any for petitioner, Mr. Twing? Okay. Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan and the contingencies as noted.
Motion by Mr. Chase. Is there support? Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on this motion? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Site plan approved. Nice job.
Thank you. Great drawings.
Yeah, looks good.
Nice brick display, Mr. Clatt.
Okay, so moving right along, another site plan, SP seventeen, twelve, thirty-one. This is to construct a second-story addition to a multiple-family building at three, one, six, Mary Avenue. Mr. Twing?
Uh, this site is on the north side of Mary Avenue between North Lafayette, the dead end of North Lafayette and North Washington Avenue. There are three existing units on the site. The petitioner, as you indicated, is proposing to add a second floor and three more units for a total of six. The site plan does depict six proposed off-street parking spaces along the north or backside as soon as it rolls up here. You will note from our staff report, there are four variances that we've identified based on this plan that the Zoning Board of Appeals would have to grant. That's assuming the Planning Commission takes a favorable action this evening. The first is in regards to the required lot area for the proposed number of units. The second is in regards to the south front, east side, and west side setback requirements. The third is, by code, each unit is required to have two spaces, and again, they're proposing six. And then it is a non-conforming structure currently, so D would be the expansion of a non-conforming structure. Assuming, again, the Planning Commission wants to move forward with this. Item two is in regards to the design and materials. Three is in regards to the exterior storage for refuge and requirement that it be screened. Find the site plan here. Item four is in regards to the six-foot masonry screening wall along the north. We're recommending that that extend along the west property line pursuant to zoning ordinance provision. Item five, you will note on the site plan that there are trees along the north side in close proximity to the proposed wall. That item is in regards to if any of those are removed, they should be replaced pursuant to ordinance requirements. The remaining contingencies are standard contingencies in terms of performance bonds and other ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions? Not seeing any. Is the petitioner here?
I'm Steve from Stucky Vitale Architects. We're the petitioner.
Welcome.
So our main goal with this project development is to really mesh this building into the existing neighborhood. There's been a lot of development from single-story bungalows and ranches to develop two-story house, housing. So our goal is really to introduce this building into the fabric of the neighborhood. We've been working with the Planning Commission regarding different materials and the design aesthetic to really try to mesh this better. We are very flexible with working with colors and different materials, if that's something that the Planning Commission sees necessary, excuse me. that the planning commission sees necessary, excuse me.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions for the petitioner?
Tim, I've got a question. Could you walk us through the, you've got the contingencies for the zoning board, so if this were to receive a favorable approval this evening, they would go right to the zoning board from here?
Well, they still would have to make application. Those are the ones based on this plan that the zoning board would have to grant. Again, that's assuming you want to approve the site plan with those deviations.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Klooster.
Can, is it possible for you to elaborate on the exist, the non-conforming status of the existing structure? Exactly how is it non-conforming in its current state?
Well, the same setbacks, because it's a multi-family building, would apply to the existing structure, so it would be required to have 25-foot setbacks to the building. I didn't run the numbers, but I also believe three units, it would need a larger lot area for the original three units.
Okay.
So, it's non-conforming in a sense of what's already there.
Mr. Twing, is this the only non-conforming site in this neighborhood? Or there's an apartment building and then there's some single-family homes?
Well, this site and the site to the east are both zone multi-family.
Okay.
Whether they're non-conforming in terms of requirements, I can say this one is. Whether the apartment to the east is, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chase.
Your plan is just to take the top off and go up with leaving the existing four walls?
That's correct. The existing first level will remain the same, new finishes on the interior, but the exterior walls would all remain the same, and then we would build directly on top of that.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, and I guess do we give them the approval to go to the zoning board for their variances?
No, you just prove it based on those contingencies.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan with the contingencies as noted by the staff.
Motion, is there support? Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion on this motion? Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that I think there are areas of our city where there's demand for housing in our city, particularly rental housing, and not a lot of places to expand it. And so, where we can build on density in an appropriately zoned area in what I think is going to be an attractive improvement to the existing building, I think we are meeting necessary demand in a way that is still respectful of the, the street that it's on, and so I'm happy to support this.
Okay, not seeing any of the discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Okay, this is the last item under new business. That's a site plan, SP 171232, to construct a two-story, 30,510-square-foot building and expand self-storage facility, public storage at 5060 Coolidge Highway. Mr. Twing.
This site is on the east side of Coolidge, north of 14. The site in, that's particularly in front of you is 4.86 acres. The remainder of the site's already developed with some 461 existing storage units on that adjacent parcel. The petitioner is proposing to build a three-story building, approximately 33 feet to the roof, some 30,510 square feet with 861 additional rental units based on their, or storage units based on their floor plan. So, the total for the site would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,322 total units. Based on zoning ordinance parking requirements, there would require 29 spaces. They are indicating on the site plan, 33. There is no specific setback requirements other than what the planning commission may choose to approve as part of site plan approval. And the site, and those setbacks do vary as you look at the proposed building and where it sits on the site. Terms of contingencies, if planning commission wanted to approve it, one would be they maintain all required operational standards for the self-storage under the ordinance. Two, that both parcels, both the existing and the proposed new development, be combined because of their proximity and shared parking, that requirement. Item three, I guess I should elaborate a little on, there's an existing billboard on site that was approved through a settlement between the city and the billboard company. As part of this, they're proposing to move that billboard. It's not part of this specific site plan as far as your approval, but that settlement release required that it comply with the size, placement type thing, so that would come through approval at some later date. So, item three is just an acknowledgement that the existing billboard is going to be relocated. Items four, five, six, seven, and eight are standard contingencies under the ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Not seeing any. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything to the staff report?
I'm here, I'm here to answer questions. I probably don't have a whole lot to add.
Your name, please?
Dan Matula with Public Storage. And I'm here with Derek Leary from Kimley Horn.
Thank you. Any questions for this petitioner?
No.
Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Douglas?
Yes, I'm of approval of the proposal.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Chase. Any discussion?
Who verifies the billboard relocation and everything? Us?
Well, when it comes in for permits, it's going to have to get reviewed and approved, so we'll verify it at that time. It's just not part of this submission.
Okay.
Not seeing any of the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I remember that billboard.
Yeah.
Very well. Okay. Moving on to other business. This is a sign variance, 171213, request to install a monument sign for assisted living senior housing facility Royal Oak House at 1,900 North Washington Avenue with a variance to allow monuments signed for institutional use without frontage on a major street. Mr. Twing.
This property is not in any sign, designated sign area, therefore, it needs to comply with all the required standards for signs located in any of those so non-designated areas. In that case, the proposed monument-style sign does comply with the minimum standards in terms of size, height, placement. However, it does not comply with a provision that indicates that the monument signs for institutional use is much beyond a major street. As we indicated in the report, a major street is defined by a right of way greater than 66 feet. In this case, Washington Avenue, which the, North Washington, which the sign is located on, is only 60 feet. Mary Avenue is only 50 feet in right-of-way width. Therefore, it was denied based on that by the building department. So, that's the variance request that's in front of you is to allow a monument-style sign for an institutional use at a location without major street frontage.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions? Petitioner here? Your name, sir?
Terry Clark from Edmund London and Associates. I'm here to represent our firm and the owner of First Sure Senior Living Group slash Royal Oak House.
Thank you.
No problem.
Would you like to add to the staff report?
Kind of the preface was, when the owners purchased the property, there was a ground sign on there, in our opinion, not very pretty, but there was a ground sign. And as we decided to redevelop the property, we initially just kind of assumed we would be able to keep the ground sign. Obviously, after we submitted for site plan approval, it was discovered, obviously, non-conformance due to the, you know, major frontage streets. But as we continued to move forward, being that this is a senior facility, we felt the need to kind of try to obtain a ground sign to, number one, help wayfinding for the residents, visitors, with respect that the entrance to this facility is on the north side, not visible from Mary Street, not visible so much from Washington Street. So, we were essentially trying to help wayfind people to their front entrance by giving this monument sign along Washington. We did take consideration into, obviously, being this is residential neighborhood, we didn't want to do anything with heavy lighting, so we did do some small ground, ground mounted lights to kind of provide a light to it. But again, we didn't want to do any illuminated signs, trying to respect the residential neighborhood that we were in.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner?
Is this a illuminated sign?
It's not illuminated. The only illumination, the illumination is going to be a ground light putting up to it, so obviously, at night, it could be seen.
Sorry, I was looking at something else.
I'm looking at the, is there, is there a sign there right now?
There initially, I'll say a year ago, yes.
What, is it white? Or was it white?
The original ground sign looked like that.
Okay, thank you.
And it was located at more sort of the corner of Mary and Washington.
Okay. How high is this sign, Tim?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay.
It's got almost 24 and a half square feet, and that setback 10 feet from the west property line.
Okay. And you want to put this in the, in the exact spot that the old one was?
No. Again, the old one is at the corner.
It's right, it's right here. Just south of the driveway, over here.
Okay. I'm pretty good at reading site plans, but this is... Oh, there he is, okay. What's the material on this?
Brick.
Okay.
It's a brick material to match the building, and then the sign itself is going to be an aluminum panel.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign variance. I think this is, to our points, a lot more of a wayfinding sign. It's kind of in the back area, and they're improving the building, and they need to draw attention to it, and it's kind of in a bad situation there, so I don't have any problem with it. It's not like it's an LED flashing type of sign, so.
Okay, motion by Mr. Chase, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, you have a sign.
Thank you for your consideration. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, moving right along. We have another sign variance, SP 171214. It's a request to install wall and window signs for retail store Orvis at 29500 Woodward Avenue with variances to allow five wall signs on the west front, north side, south side, east rear facades, a waiver of a square footage, and allow window signs to cover 100% of the window area in the, in the west front facade. Mr. Twing.
This, this property is located in sign area two. As you indicated, the petitioner is proposing to install four new wall signs on each side of the building. Each, each facade already has one existing wall sign that would remain after the four new ones are installed. Ordinance requirements and the sign ordinance limit, limit it to one wall sign per facade. That's why you see the item A requesting a variance to allow five wall signs. The maximum square footage is 100 square feet. The five signs on the north facade would result in slightly over that of some 0.44 square feet, and the petitioner seeking a variance from that for the north side of the building. The last item is in regards to window signage, which the sign ordinance in sign area two allows up to 15% on the west facade. The petitioner is proposing to cover the, all the windows are 100% with window signage display. So, those are the variances that are listed, and those are right in front of you for their request.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here?
Alan Chico of Fast Signs Birmingham.
Welcome.
What they're requesting here is to add some dimensional letters. They're non-illuminated PVC letters. I believe they're an inch thick. They'll all be peg-mounted to the building on all four sides of the building. They already have existing Orvis signs on all four sides of the building.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, any questions for the petitioner? There?
Yeah, the existing, I mean, as it relates to the window signage, if I remember today, existing, they have like shadow boxes or, not shadow boxes, but built-in displays. They don't have, remind me what's on.
I believe they have built-in displays, so the windows are kind of covered, covered already, and they're looking to replace those graphics.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
So, the wording is the only things that we're adding, the men's, women's, fly fishing, the parts underneath it are considered the window graphic, or is that already there? Like the?
Canopy?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are existing onings. Yep.
That's what that is, okay.
So, the canopies are there and, and the words Orvis are there. They want to add window pictures, men's, women's, fly fishing, and dogs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Douglas?
So, looking at just Google Street View here, it appears that there's already, so you've got one, two, you've got five windows here, and it appears that there's already a graphic in the center one, or at least there was a year ago.
Yes.
Mr. Twing, is that been approved? Is that?
I don't know off the top of my head whether it was approved previously.
I don't think so, not under our tenure.
I don't remember. I think they just did it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is anybody from Orvis here?
Not that I know of, no. I don't think anybody showed up.
Okay. So, I don't, I'm, it's a lot of variances. I'm struggling with that. I'm struggling with that. Me too.
Maybe I'll be the first to speak.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I guess the thing I'm struggling with is, you know, the complete coverage of the windows. Obviously, the building is, you know, designed at a previous planning commission when this was built, and as we look at the future of Woodward and walkability and things like that, we're moving buildings closer to the road, closer to the sidewalk, and our strategy over the next fifty, hundred, ten, twenty years, you name it, is, you know, to continue to make sure that, you know, we don't have a series of mini strip malls all over town, right? That we want to have this, this feel for every neighborhood of, of walkability and, and good planning measure. And I feel that by offering this variance on the windows, covering the windows completely, it kind of draws away from that vision that we have for the community that we're working towards incrementally, um, almost a step backwards in a way. I don't, I'm curious what my colleagues think about the signs that say men's, women's, fly fishing, dogs. I mean, from an aesthetic perspective, I mean, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but, um, I think the window, uh, signs really give me, again, a little bit of heartburn considering, you know, what we're trying to do with, um, it, it essentially turns it into more of a billboard than, you know, the facade of a building, and that's what I struggle with.
I, um, I agree. I think one of the things that makes this building special is because it just says Orvis. And I think that if we had more designs like this along Woodward, it would be much more attractive corridor, clean things up. Orvis is a brand in itself. It's the only store in Michigan except there's one in Grand Rapids, so it's a brand in itself, and it's a destination for people. I struggle with the variances. I struggle with cluttering up with more signs. I'm, I, I don't, I don't buy the wayfind, wayfinding argument. I think Orvis is Orvis, and if you know what you want, you're going to go to Orvis. We were really, um, pretty clear on that Shell gas station that went in about denying any, any window signage on that, and we actually granted them an additional, uh, set of signs so they would vacate the window signs to make sure that's, that's stays clean, and they've done that, which I like, so we'd like to try to stay consistent with that. Ms. Douglas?
So, yeah, the problem I have with the window signs is they've shown us some pretty pictures here, um, but I don't know that, I mean, we can't be sure that those are the pretty pictures they'll wind up with, nor do we really have a prob, process to regulate that. I mean, if our, if our code enforcement department drove by and there was a picture of, I don't know, the Eiffel Tower, or something not matching, or, Orvis, or even something inappropriate, there's really no way to regulate those window signs. So that's my concern with, uh, that's why I would oppose them. I'm less concerned about the addition of the additional words, men's, women's, fly fishing, dogs, because, I mean, net amount of signage on that facade still remains close to what we permit. So I, I could go either way on that, but I, the window signs just aren't gonna, aren't gonna make it with me. So I'll try a motion, and we'll see what happens. Um, I'm gonna move to, um, approve the, how is it worded here? Da, da, da. Um, approve the variance for the new wall signs on all sides of the building, but to not approve the window signs at all.
So you're doing A and B and not C?
Where, I've lost, I've lost myself.
The lead-in subject you're doing, you're approving A and B but not C?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Ms. Douglas to approve the five wall signs on the west, north, south, and east rear facades, and waive zero point four four square foot of maximum permitted hundred-square-foot wall sign area, and there's been support by the mayor. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Chase?
Uh, I, I'll be supporting the motion. I think that the, the wall signs itself kind of equals out that the facade looks a little bit empty right now, architecturally speaking, and by adding that, it's kind of matching the building next to it over each window, so I don't really have a problem with that. And I think that the wall, the window signs are, uh, like she said, they're, it's hard to regulate a little bit too much, so I'll be supporting the motion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I struggle a little bit with allowing four extra signs per facade, um, but when, when you look at the overall sign area, you're within a, you know, a fraction of, of the allowable. Um, so, a, again, I, I think I'll, I'll support the motion as it stands with allowing the signage and denying the, the window graphics, and I'll kind of repeat the sentiment of, you know, the, the character that we want to maintain along Woodward and promote walkability and, you know, pro, having doors and storefronts along Woodward do that, and blocking those off with graphics and turning them into, you know, you know, signage doesn't promote that sort of character along Woodward.
Well, as I stated before, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll pose this motion. I, I like the brand, I like the building the way it is. I think too mu, too many signs is too much clutter, so I will be voting against this. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Four to one. It passes. Okay, next. Sign variance seventeen twelve fifteen, uh, request to install wall signs for self-storage facility, public storage, fifty sixty Coolidge Highway. Uh, let's see, a variance to allow three wall signs on the north facade and allow prohibited projecting signs, wall signs projecting beyond twelve inches from the building on the north facade. Mr. Twing?
Well, as you indicated, uh, those are the variants being requested. The property is in sign area two. Uh, the petitioner is proposing to install, uh, wall signs on the west, north, uh, south facades of the building. Each, uh, wall sign would have an area of approximately ninety point seven square feet. Two other, uh, signs are proposed on, uh, the north side of the building, uh, on the, on canopies, uh, with additional square footage, as we've indicated. Uh, one wall sign with no more than a hundred square feet is what's permitted on each facade. Therefore, the variance is necessary for three wall signs on that north facade, as you indicated, uh, and are, are depicted on the, uh, the drawing I have up on the screen. Additionally, um, wall signs may not project more than twelve inches from the building facade. Uh, if they do, they're considered projecting signs, which are prohibited in sign area two, and that's the, uh, reason for the request on the, uh, two or wall signs, is they do stick out farther than the twelve inches.
Those are number three?
Those are, uh, four and five.
Four and five.
So how are they? Yeah, what, how are they sticking out, Tim? What, are they on, like, some posts, or?
They're on the canopies, I believe.
Well, they're on the canopy.
But this says it's on E F.
The canopies project out five feet.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Twing? Petitioner still here?
Dan Matulow, Public Storage. The two additional signs that we're requesting are, are wayfinding signs. There's one over the office and one over the loading area. And so these are non-illuminated signs, um, nine inches high, and, and, and they're on the front face of the canopy versus on the building, and so that's, that's why the variance request.
Oh, the, I see, it says rental office and loading.
It says rental office and loading, and it's just, oh, on the canopy for each of the entries of the building. They're not illuminated, they're nine inches high. Just wa, wayfinding signs.
Gotcha, okay. Any questions for the petitioner?
Yes. So the canopies are already there?
Yes, ma'am. They will be when we build the building.
Right, will be, right. And they're all, no, no setback problems? They're all fine with the canopies being where they are?
Yeah, this is the same building that you approved earlier.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for, for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Oh, Mr. Chase, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just had, the public storage, though, ones, the ones on the number one and?
Two and three.
Number two and three, those are just adhered to the facade of the building itself, correct?
Yes, those are the typical, you know, internally channel letters.
Yeah.
Internally illuminated up, on, on the face of the building.
Okay. I just want to make, make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign variances. Two of them are wayfinding signs that are, you know, when you get in the parking lot, it's good to know where you're going. And it kind of fits the building, so it's hard to see on that corner, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the sign variance as requested.
There's been a motion made to approve by Mr. Chase. Is there support?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support again. Uh, these kind of fall into that wayfinding category. Um, they're small, the overall sign area on that facade falls within the, the hundred-square-foot limit. Um, the sign itself isn't really, um, projecting where you, you know, we've seen projecting signs on posts in the past, really. They're, they're adhered to a part of the building that's, um, not necessarily within the strict envelope, um, so I will, uh, be supporting the, the variance.
Any discussion on the motion? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. You got your signs.
Thank you for your turn.
Okay, the last item, uh, under Other Business is reconsideration of sign variance seventeen ten zero nine. It's a request to install a freestanding sign with electronic message center for religious institution, the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church at eight one four North Campbell Road, with the variance to allow prohibited sign-type electric electronic message center outside of sign area two. Mr. Twing?
Um, well, you may recall that, uh, in October, the Planning Commission, uh, approved two of the requested variances regarding this sign and denied, uh, the electronic message center portion of it. At November's meeting, which I did not attend, uh, the Planning Commission, um, made a motion to reconsider the denial of electronic message center, um, portion of the requested variance. Uh, that motion was approved, and therefore, the, the sign request is back in front of you this evening, uh, for your reconsideration.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Or any discussion about this reconsideration? I was absent from that meeting.
I was absent from the first one and then chaired the second one. Kind of picking it up as we go along.
Okay. Well, um, does anybody, was there anybody here that can comment on the reconsideration? There, was there a reason for this to be brought up? Mayor?
Well, I think for me, um, the reason why I supported it, I mean, obviously, on the first vote, or, I, um, I'm not sure how it went down, I can't exactly remember, but I was in favor of all the three variances proposed by the petitioner. And I think for me, I mean, this is my neighborhood, my neck of the woods. I drive up and down Campbell every day, taking my girls to school, uh, back and forth. And I think, you know, in my opinion, this body is empowered with making, I mean, we have obviously the say on all sign variances, and while I'm a strong proponent and steward of our electronic sign ordinance, or our signed ordinance amendments and all the work that we've done, I feel that we can't always possibly capture every single constellation that is out there in an ordinance, and therefore, um, when the petitioners came here asking for an electronic sign, I think for me, when I look at what their existing status quo is, uh, and I look at the, the neighborhood, the, you know, does this fit in the area? Are there any objections by neighbors? Uh, you go to the north, uh, you have Howie Glass there, uh, although they don't have an electronic sign, my understanding is they would be allowed to have one based on the, um, the, uh, sign ordinance, so, um, you know, for me, uh, it seems that, um, I don't see any harm being done. I do see a burden to the, um, to the petitioner not being able to, you know, advertise, or not advertise, I guess that's a bad word, but, you know, it's, it's a, it's not in the business of raising money to market to bring people in their door. It's a different type of business where their main efficient, effective way of communication is through their, their signage. And I think, um, you know, the, uh, as, I don't know how to put this, as parishes and churches and religious institutions get older in age, their demographic gets older, uh, it is a burden to, to maintain, you know, a sign and communicate, you know, through all mediums. So I felt that they, there was no harm. I felt that, you know, there was somewhat of a reasonable hardship, and then I felt that, you know, given the uniqueness of this geography and in juxtaposition to other properties in the area and what they're allowed to do, I didn't, I didn't see any harm, but, um, that was where my head was at, if we were going to kick off this conversation.
Thank you. Any other comments on this before we invite the petitioner up? Is the petitioner here? Okay. Your name, please?
My name is Stephen Schwego. I am the Council President at Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and this is my wife, Judy, also my architect, who put together the presentation. First, let me thank you for reconsideration. Uh, it's that vitally important to, uh, our church that we, uh, took that effort to try and, and come before you again tonight, uh, and I, I just, thanks for the reconsideration, the chance to, uh, provide the information that we put together to show, or try to convince you, if, if that's a better word, of the hardships that, uh, our church would, um, be subject to if, if we can't, uh, get any electronic sign. So some of this information might be repeated, but we have a couple of different, um, commission members who were here, were here in October and not in November, so bear with me. Uh, I spoke to you in October regarding our request for three variances for a replacement sign in front of our church. Uh, we were pleased that we were granted the first two variances, but disappointed we were denied approval of the third variance to an, allow, to allow an electronic messaging sign. After abiding by Roberts Rules of Order whereby a motion can be reconsidered, I am here tonight representing our congregation to respectfully request that you reconsider that motion to deny us a variance for an electronic sign. When I spoke here back in October, regretfully, I did not fully understand that the criteria for granting a variance depended on the demonstration of hardship. I was here again in November, and I'd like to further discuss the variance this evening by explaining the hardships that the church will suffer if the variance is still denied. First, our sign contract, contractor has informed us that the current twenty-two-year-old sign is functionally obsolete and therefore needs to be replaced rather than repaired. It is broken and deteriorating, and all the sign companies we spoke with will not guarantee a retrofit into the existing base, since most new signs these days tend to be electronic. It would be beyond our financial means to completely replace the sign base and foundation in addition to the sign itself for any other type of sign except an LED messaging sign as proposed that does fit on the existing base. Even if we were able to replace it with a new manual lettering sign, given the distance from the road with the deep city easement landscaping and public sidewalk of Good Shepherd, sign company advice and experience tells us that there is no other type of sign that can be effectively seen by vehicle traffic other than an LED sign, even if the messages never change. The old sign was effective decades ago when the road was narrow, narrower and traffic was slower, but that has changed. Additionally, the size of our current sign is larger and brighter than a new LED sign, which would be smaller and has adjustments for lowering its brightness and automatically dims at night, unlike the extremely bright and blinding farmer's market sign so close to the road. As our submitted affidavit states, our sign would be respectful of our surrounding neighbors and community and would be used for church events along with directing residents of Royal Oak to city and community events. I want to address the issue of an ordinance is an ordinance and the resist, in reluctance, rather, to grant a variance. We understand how you might be hesitant to opening the door to future challenges of this ordinance. However, I would point out that the situation with Good Shepherd is extremely unique with exceptional circumstances peculiar to our property, being that we are surrounded by various buildings that are allowed, yet we are not. I do not believe any other business or church could argue our same points nor hardships. The granting of the first two variances, although very much appreciated, but grouped with the denial of the third variance, does not provide us with the means of getting our message any closer to the traveling community. I am aware that your job is to uphold an ordinance. but by definition, the word variance means to vary from the ordinance, just as with the first two ordinances. Last month, when I spoke here, one of you mentioned concerns about the sign being too close to the road. Good Shepherd's current sign, also where the new sign would be as well, is 40 feet from the city curb, which means to actually read it, traveling at 35 miles per hour from the two lanes going north or even further away from the two lanes going south, vehicles are a good 90 feet from the sign. You simply cannot read a message limited to only 92 characters composed of three-inch letters from possibly 50 to 90 feet away, which is close to one-third of a football field, traveling at 35 miles per hour. Second, it is important for you to understand a location issue that was not brought up the first time I spoke. You are aware that Good Shepherd is considered just outside of Area 2, yet the only two buildings on either side of us are inside Area 2 and allowed an LED messaging sign, including businesses across the street from the church also allowed an LED sign. The northern boundary of our parking lot goes right up to a business, Howie Glass. What I did not mention back in October is that for years we have been leasing a portion of our parking lot to Howie Glass for their customer parking because they do not have adequate parking on their own property for employees and customers. They pay us a rental fee each month for the use of our parking lot, which places us in a contract for commercial activity with the business in Area 2. For this very reason of leasing parking to a business in Area 2, we feel we should at least be considered equal to Howie Glass as being allowed to have an LED sign. Third, as to hardship, because the current sign is so old and deteriorating, it has become almost impossible for any member of our congregation to operate. The physical limitations of our mostly older church members means that we really cannot change the current signs, manual lettering ourselves. The sign we now have has a large, heavy protective vandal shield that has to be unlocked, lifted up, and propped open to even begin altering the lettering, usually done by a contractor or our handyman. If we wanted to rotate messages, this would need to be done on a weekly basis, and that includes winter time and freezing temperatures like today. Because it is such a costly burden, it just never gets changed. A newer, non-electronic sign would have the same burdensome features, or worse, be unchangeable. A new electronic sign would eliminate this hardship and other issues for our older congregation. Fourth, the lack of effective signage could very well result in practical difficulties and/or hardships that go a lot deeper than mere inconvenience or monetary concern for the church. Most importantly, our church hosts our Beacon of Hope Food Pantry, which provides supplementary food assistance to low-income citizens, including the elderly. The church belongs to TFAP, the federally funded emergency food assistance program that helps supplement the diets of low-income Americans, including the elderly, by providing them with emergency food and nutrition assistance at no cost. TFAP provides free food and administrative funds directly to our church. Our more recent food pantries have seen a significant drop in families from about 100 families down to about 30. And if we fall below a certain number of participants, which we are close to doing, we will lose the external TFAP subsidy aid, meaning no food pantry. Other churches in our region, which provide the same types of services, have seen a significant increase in participants with the installation of electronic signage. Many of the TFAP clients have no access to the internet or cell phones or other communication methods and rely on visual messages such as signs or word of mouth for information. Good Shepherd serves a much larger regional community than just its Royal Oak congregation members. A new LED sign can allow us to get the word out to those families in need and to accomplish our mission of helping our community in this most important and life-saving way. We feel that the ordinance restrictions unreasonably prevent Good Shepherd from using our property in the way it has always been intended, and that is to serve our community. For instance, this summer, we had no way to let our community know about our vacation Bible school for children. So we made an A-frame poster and put it on the front lawn. It was there one day, and Royal Oak Police came by and gave us a warning to remove the sign as we had placed it on the city easement for visibility. As a result, that program failed. Howie Glass is a 105-year-old family-owned business and Church of God of Prophecy, a very small and old church, are on either side of us, both inside Area 2 and permitted to have electronic signs. And both extremely unlikely to ever install an electronic sign. We cannot serve if people do not know what we can offer, and without this sign, we are severely handicapped in communication. This is another reason for a variance to this ordinance, the unfair placement of our church to surrounding properties, which in addition to the glass business and the very small church, also include a very old auto repair, a vacated office building, and a small takeout restaurant, placing Good Shepherd within a commercial area, yet we are the only ones not in Area 2. Just to show the need for Good Shepherd to our community, our doors are open in excess of 75 hours a week to members and also non-members in groups that we host for their needs. We have such a mutual trust with these groups that they have an entrance key to the church as opposed to Church of God of Prophecy, which according to their own website is open six and a half hours a week and offer absolutely no community involvement. But they can still, are in Area 2 and allowed to have an electronic sign. Churches in all cities are replacing old signs with newer messaging technology. This is the way churches are heading, and we are merely asking for permission to keep up with the times. For instance, Royal Oak Church of Christ on Cambone 11 Mile, Woodlawn Church on Rochester Road, St. John's Episcopal on 12 Mile and Woodward, First Congregational on Crook's Road, Unity on Crook's Road, Guardian Angels on 14 Mile Road, and scores of others in our neighboring communities. In Madison Heights, Troy, Berkeley, and Clausen all have LED messaging signs. We are just asking to join them in reaching out to our community. As to another criteria for consideration of a variance, a new LED messaging sign would not negatively alter the essential character of the area. Quite the opposite, it would modernize this very old part of town. The top left picture is Howie Glass. You can see a couple cars parked right next to it. That is our parking lot, which goes right up to Howie Glass. They are at Area 2 and allowed an LED sign. Top right is the Church of God of Prophecy, who is also in Area 2, a stone's throw from our church, who is only open six and a half hours a week and no community involvement, yet they're in Area 2 and allowing electronic sign. Bottom left is an expanded view of our parking lot from our church right up to Howie Glass. Again, they're using our parking lot for customers and employees, and we are actually physically touching each other, and they're allowed a sign and we are not. Across the street is the old auto care business, who is also in Area 2 and allowed a sign. And right across the street is our church right there, and we are not. The few residential neighbors affected say they have no problem with the church putting in a new LED sign. As long as we are respectful, we have already submitted an affidavit signed by our pastor and myself stating that we will comply with all ordinance requirements as to the sign's operation. In addition, the new sign will be less bright than our current very bright fluorescent sign and dimming at dusk. We are just asking for this variance and a chance to move our church into a more modern world, the same as downtown Royal Oak wants to do. Additionally, if you check the Next Door Red Run, a website for neighborhoods to communicate with each other, area residents are very supportive of the new sign and confused as to why we have been denied the variance. I have submitted to you some of the comments directly from this neighborhood site, omitting names. There are no other LED messaging signs in Royal Oak, on Campbell Road, between 11 and 13 Mile Roads, and it is extremely unlikely there ever will be any in this particular area. So in our case, there is no problem of saturation or proliferation of too many signs, ordinance abuse, harm, pollution, or deterioration of the community. A new sign can only spark new interest and show that Good Shepherd is a vibrant and active church with caring ministries and full of life unlike the tired sign that currently represents us. It's important to understand that churches can no longer just depend on their congregations to sustain them. We are borrowing from our investment funds monthly to keep the church running, and our treasurer estimates we have three to five years before our doors close to our congregation, to the food pantry, to all self-help groups, along with our surrounding community outreach programs. Just like commercial businesses that are permitted to have electronic signs, we need to reach out and be a part of the larger surrounding areas and reach out to the younger demographics of our area. We also need to do fundraising events to help with church costs, again, reaching out with a new LED sign. Mayor Fornier, it's not advertising, it's promotion. I was hoping that was the word you were looking for. We don't want to advertise. We also need to do fundraising events to help with church costs. First Congregational Church on Crook's Road, for example, raises significant and essential funds through its annual rummage sale, which it announces on its LED sign and draws shoppers from around the area. Without a messaging sign, this event would never raise the necessary funds that it does. It would be a financial hardship for Good Shepherd if we were to be denied the opportunity to help fund our mission and operations through the use of an LED sign to send out our own messages. I believe we have presented evidence to show that if this ordinance is applied strictly, unnecessary hardship and practical difficulties will result to Good Shepherd, including closing its doors, and that a lesser relaxation than we are asking for would not give relief to the church or be fair and just concerning properties directly around us. A variance would do substantial justice to Good Shepherd as well as to other property owners in the immediate area. Pertaining to the variance ordinance, section 13, amendment to section 607-15, I believe we have met all criteria listed in A through H, particularly hardship with the possibility of Good Shepherd closing its doors in a few years after nearly three-fourths of a century of community ministry if we do not increase membership and fundraise. In conclusion, the LED messaging sign is a next-generation sign. While the manual letter sign was state-of-the-art 25 years ago, it is obsolete in today's world. The LED sign will catch the eye of folks traveling past the church. The programming features enable the church to be a good neighbor, respectful of city ordinances. Attracting younger readers is a feature that the previous generation sign does not do. In the digital age we live in, a static sign will not reach the target audience like a technologically relevant sign, which can be used for public service announcements to build community and citizenship. In addition to increasing membership, we feel a new sign would most certainly add class and modernization to a very old section of town, making Good Shepherd stand out, giving a stately 67-year-old iconic church a much-needed facelift along with updating the neighboring area. In summary, with the community backing us, along with the commercial rental of our parking lot to our neighboring business, being surrounded by commercial businesses, having a functionally obsolete and deteriorating sign that is a hardship to change, the need to increase our food pantry families to maintain our government's food subsidy for the needy, and the hardship that it would create for the church and community if we do not, the fact that we cannot retrofit any other type of sign, the possible closing of our church without a means to reach out to our community, and the fact that we feel we have met all criteria required for a variance, which is A through H of the sign ordinance. For all these reasons and more, we respectfully request that the Planning Commission, as a sign board of appeals, reconsider its motion to deny us the variance for a new sign and grant the variance. One last thought. On the City of Royal Oak's own website, it says, "The vision of the city commission is to be a dynamic balance of progressive vision and traditional values, offering an inviting, premier, and diverse community for all." We feel this also describes the vision of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church as well. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions, and thank you for your time. I know it was a lot, but this is our last shot. So I wanted to cover as much as I could. Thank you.
Back to the commission.
Mr. Twing, I have a question. I'm looking at what I think is the city's official sign ordinance or sign area designation map. And it does not appear that the property to the south of Good Shepherd is in Zone 2. What am I missing? So this would be the church, and their map shows that I think this site is in sign area 2. But it's not.
I believe that's the old map. Go down to the legend, if there's four sign areas, that's the old map.
There are four.
There should only be three sign areas.
Like, could we get a current map up on our website, please?
I got this from the commission. Kevin? I forget his title.
I'm exasperated. So now I'll ask, why is it that the property to the south is in sign area 2?
My only guess would be, without going and looking, is that they may have been in a different designation or they got a variance granted to them for a sign. And rather than it being, but I'm guessing as to why that property was included.
Well, if they got a variance, they wouldn't, they'd still be not sign area 2.
Well, they may have put it in based on the fact that it got a variance, and rather than make an electronic message center non-conforming under a new code, they stuck it in sign area 2, but I'd have to go back and look.
Well, but they don't have an electronic sign there.
They may not have put it in. Without looking, I don't know. And frankly, it's irrelevant.
Yeah.
Whether there's property on either side in a sign area or not, is not a relevant issue. You draw a boundary at some point, even if it's across the street, even if it's surrounded, at some point you draw a boundary. So it's not really relevant.
So everything else was approved. We're just concentrating on the little message board part.
Motion by Godeck and supported by Commissioner Douglas was to deny the last part of that motion, which was for the electronic sign, which is not allowed in this area.
Right, you denied the last portion, but I believe if you were considering to approve it, I think the other two variances are open as well.
We should, if we're going to make a motion.
You can, if you were to consider granting electronic message center, you may not want to grant a bigger sign.
Yeah, I mean, I remember that particular meeting in October, and this item was directly after an item where we denied a prohibited sign in a given sign area. And it's difficult, I think, for us as a board to, unless there's specific hardships, to look at situations differently. So I think that's one of the big reasons that we responded the way we did at the previous meeting is it's a prohibited sign in the area. And I think as a board, we've been pretty consistent in sticking with the intent of the ordinance, with the exception of wayfinding difficulties or extreme difficulties with strict adherence to the ordinance.
That's my memory also, and I would agree with that. We had denied the sign on 4th and the Attorney that was prohibited as well. And that was on the same agenda, which is why I voted for the motion to approve the two variances and deny the electronic messaging. That's my memory as well. Mayor?
I think at that time, I mean, the petitioner, in my opinion, also didn't do a good enough job articulating their hardships. And I think for me, that's also a new variable, even though I was supportive before, I think. You know, I hope this board considers that new information as well.
Is there a motion?
Well, I will move to, not having been there for the other meeting and just kind of going off of what I've heard here tonight and looking at the waivers that were granted for the 1'7" and the 9'9", I too agree that this board has been pretty consistent with the message boards. And I do recall some other...
the message boards, and I do recall some other institutions that got reconsidered and were granted those message boards, some of which he mentioned in his speech. So, I think it's a tough call, and I just have to agree with the mayor on this. I'll move that we adopt the, or not adopt, what am I, approve the signed variance for the message board and keep the other two variances the way they were, as it previously proved.
There's a motion by Mr. Chasten, support by the mayor to maintain the original approval of the first two variances and add the approval of the electronic message center. Is there a discussion on that motion? Ms. Douglas?
Yes, so we've seen examples of, in fact, in recent months, examples of businesses that were located in an area that in fact had no sign ordinance whatsoever. In fact, we had one here tonight. Wasn't the nursing home, isn't that the case? That's, I mean, that's not in a sign area, and yet it's a business, and it's reasonable to think that the business needs a sign. I don't dispute that, but I think my goal would be whenever I'm approving a sign in an area that doesn't allow any signage at all, is to keep the signage as minimal as possible. I think it's reasonable to allow the church to build a new sign and to give them some, I mean, because it's not a sign area, basically the sign can be whatever we want it to be. However, the City Commission, over the course of the past year, had lengthy discussions about electronic signs and specifically voted to allow them in a designated sign area 2. I voted against that. I don't like electronic signs. We have, we've had them in the past, we've approved them in the past, but the ordinance has changed, and while I'm bound by the existing ordinance to allow digital signs in certain areas, I have to be true to myself and my beliefs, and I don't want them in our city. I want as few of them as possible, and I have to, as I say, be true to my beliefs and vote against this, and you do wonderful work, and I acknowledge that. And, but, I'm sorry, but the ordinance is clear, my stand on it has been clear, and I have to vote against it.
Any other discussion? I'm going to agree with Ms. Douglas. I too do not like the electronic signs. I'm going to stick with my original vote on this. I supported Mr. Godak's position as well. Unfortunately, he's not here this evening, and I know in the past he feels the same way, so I will not be supporting this motion. I don't see the hardship here at all, and I don't, I agree with Ms. Douglas. I think the church does phenomenal work, but I don't think a sign is going to make or break the longevity of this church. It's been there 67 years now, and I think it's going to be there still, so I'll be voting against this. Is there any other discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate. I mean, I appreciate and understand, you know, and again, I have similar sentiments about, you know, in general, about electronic signs in our community, but, you know, I think in this particular case, again, I'll go back and I'll say the features of this geography are unique, the setbacks are unique, the city easement, the size of it from the road is unique. I think the petitioner isn't going to, I mean, they've agreed not to run messages and cartoons and things like that. I think that it makes sense, you know, given, I happen to believe, yeah, there are, I mean, it's not the gravest hardship we've ever seen, but there is a hardship in my opinion. So, I'll be supporting the motion. Obviously, I supported it, I'll be voting yes on it, and, you know, like I said, it's one of these circumstances, I think, that, you know, is meant for the Planning Commission to really look at as far as a variance is concerned, given the uniqueness of the area.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, any other discussion? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to submit a motion to approve the first set of variances to install a freestanding sign at 814 North Campbell, waving 1'7" from the maximum permitted 6' freestanding sign height, and waving 9'9" of the minimum required 10' freestanding sign setback.
Okay, there's been a motion by Ms. Douglas. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion?
That's just to give him the first two of the three, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think that all three would be great, but I guess as a second option, I'll be supporting this one.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously for the original A, letter A and B of the variances. Okay, that's the last item on the agenda. Is there any comments from the board? Mr. Twing? If not, I'll, in rotation, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.